After. Okay, anything else?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I would have a question. Mr. Koch, do you intend to talk about anything related to that in the executive session? Then you might want to add to the items in the executive session. Some notation of talking about it and the reason for the executive session.
I'd also like to add an agenda item, discussion of potential litigation. As it relates to an item on the claims.
Wait a minute, I didn't hear that last statement.
As it relates to an item on the claims docket.
Okay. That's the reason you want it in the executive session, I believe.
Right.
Okay. Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the official agenda with these corrections?
Excuse me, just one second. Under the heading listed city clerk on the consent agenda, I would like to move items two and three, the dormant bank accounts and the so-called sweep account to the regular agenda.
Okay, I don't know if we have a... I'm gonna put that under mayor's business. Any other variations removing? Do I have a motion that we approve the agenda? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please, with these corrections, raise your hands. Thank you. Good evening to all of you. We have a rather large crowd. I don't know that I've ever been to a board meeting even as a protesting person to have such a large crowd. I wish you had. I have. Was that part of you or part of us? But it's nice to have this size of a board here tonight, a group of citizens here tonight. And the first thing that we will have is Mr. Perkins is going to present some service board plaques to some of our retiring employees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first presentation, Mr. Mayor, tonight is gonna be to Mr. Rory Bishop. And we're gonna ask Mr. Bishop to come on down front and we'd like to present a plaque to him. Mr. Bishop, on behalf of our Honorable Mayor, Mr. Robert D. Kemp, to my distinguished colleagues that you see sitting around this table, and on behalf of our CIO, the Chief Administrator Officer, Ms. Laine Sproul, the department heads, the park commissioners, and on behalf of all the citizens of this city, we want to take this opportunity to commend you for all your valuable services and assistance that you provided to the city of Starkville during your 28 years of employment with the city. And I'm gonna read the plaque, and the plaque reads as follows. City of Starkville, Mississippi. Rory L. Bishop, in recognition of 28 years of loyal and dedicated service to the City of Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Dedicated service from June 11, 1977 through March 8, 2005. Presented on this the 15th day of November, 2005, Robert Daniel Kemp, Mayor, Roy Perkins, Vice Mayor, Marquita Outlaw, City Clerk. And we appreciate you for all your contributions, and we want to know that you were a very valuable employee for the city of Starkville. And we hope and trust that your future endeavors will continue to be a great success.
This man did a good job.
Mr. Mayor, our next person is Mr. Kevin L. Poe. I talked with his wife last night, and she told me that he would be here, but I have not seen him as of yet. And I have been informed that Ms. Martha Malone is not going to be here tonight, so perhaps we can defer on these two remaining presentations until our next meeting. So if that's the case, Mr. Mayor, this concludes the presentation for this evening.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
That brings us down to recognition of some public service departments for receiving excellent marks. And it may note that the water department and the landfill departments have done excellent and received excellent ratings. The water department got a rating of 93 percent, when the average in the state of Mississippi is 26 to 70 percent. And those staff members, Superintendent Joel Reed, Chief Water Operator Scott Thomas, and Water Operator Venice Bishop, and Water Operator Theodas Weaver. Congratulations to you for getting such a high mark. The landfill got a rating of 100 percent, which is very good. And the staff responsible, Wade Bishop and Walter Actiberry. We appreciate the performance of this particular staff and hope that you continue to serve us as well as you have this past year. Thank you very much for that. We have one other person to acknowledge, and our police chief has been elected as Vice Chair of the Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission. This occurred on Wednesday, November the 9th, during a meeting held in Jackson. So we'd like to congratulate you, Chief, for representing Starkville, and we appreciate that very much. This brings us to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November the 1st. I think you all asked, if you had corrections, to please send them in to our administrative assistant.
Then we approved the minutes of November 1st. With any corrections?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hands, that we approve the minutes. This brings us down for the approval of the consent agenda. And I will read those items off. Airport Board, Authorization for Payment Period. Asphalt Incorporated for the Application and Certification of Payment Final, $1,853.05. Authorization of Payment to Superior Asphalt Incorporated for the Application and Certification of Payment Retainage, this is for $18,016.79. Authorization for Payment to Springer Engineering for Apron Construction Project in the amount of $27,025.19. Request Authorization of Paid Request for Clearwater Consultants on Airport Improvement Plan in the amount of $107,947. Request Authorization of Paid Request for Ellis Construction, approved by Clearwater Consultants in the amount of $510,210.32 on Airport Improvement Plan. Request Authorization for Change Order of $18,500 to clear AWAS area for additional storm drains for airport improvement project. Item number seven added, Dolls Electric for $58.0270 for repairing apron lighting, I believe is what that was for. And we're to approve a pre-application for federal assistance of $1,335,000. The city clerk's items have been moved. That brings us down to the Electric Department. Request Authorization to Employ Utility Metering Specialist to install an SCADA system in Starkville Electric Department substations. Request Authorization to Advertise and Fill Vacant Apprenish Liman Position. The Engineering Department, Approval of Final Change Order and Summary Pursuit Sewer Interceptor System. Approval of Final Paid Request from Burnson Nichols for Construction of the Sewer Interceptor System. Approval of Non-Bid Procurement for Drainage Pipes for Drainage Ditch North of GT Tim's Drive at the cost of $3,489.60. Personnel. Approval of Vicki Lowery into the Municipal Service as a Receptionist for the City Hall, as recommended by the Operations Organization Committees, at an annual salary of $15,997.11 to a Grade 5 Step 1. The Police Department. If you'll notice on your table here, there's an additional packet for ballistic purposes that was not available for us at the time that we put the agenda together, but it's on the table here. Request Authorization to Purchase 22 Ballistic Replacement Vests at the cost of $606.120, each total cost of $14,546.40. Request Authorization to Purchase One Mobile Radio and Accomplishing Electronics for Patrol Unit. Request Approval of Transfer of Seized and Afforded Weapons to the Starkville Police Department for Trade and/or Destruction. Understand that it's a semi-automatic also. Request Authorization to Hire A Full-Time Temporary Officer to Replace Activated Military Personnel. Request Authorization to Hire A Regular Full-Time Officer to Replace Position Due to Resignation Of Emmanuel Powers. Public Service Department, Request Approval of Quotation For Tree Planting Services. We got a $15,000 grant that was given us to the Forest Commission, and we have a $5,000 match, so that gives you an amount of money of about $20,000. Sanitary Department, Request Approval To Advertise For Four Budgeted Vacant Labor Positions Within The Sanitary Department. And that is for replacement of individuals that got taken off. These are the items on the consent agenda. And do I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda? Do we have a second? We have a motion with a second. Any discussion of the consent agenda items? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. That brings us down to what everybody's here for. Robert McMillan is on the agenda to make a presentation for a smoke-free Starkville. Robert, are you here?
Good evening, Mayor. I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. There'll be four of us speaking, if that pleases the board, and we will be brief.
Does that mean five minutes per person?
Ten minutes total. We would like the board to consider an ordinance, a draft of an ordinance that would prohibit smoking in all enclosed public places. First and foremost, we think this is a public health issue. The medical and scientific community is in agreement now. Secondhand smoking is incredibly dangerous. It's not just dangerous in a chronic sense that it leads to coughs and what added to it. For the young and the elderly, it's very dangerous. And there's immediate dangers for children with asthma, with ear infections, sudden death syndrome, and whatnot. For the elderly, the CDC has actually come out and recommended to people with heart disease that they not go to restaurants that allow smoking. As the Center of Disease Control, which is a federal agency, has come out and said the elderly who have heart disease shouldn't go to these restaurants. We are a community that has a lot of retirees. We also have a lot of young adults. And we also have a lot of students who work in places that allow smoking. So I think that for a public health issue, this is huge for sure. And it's also a quality of life issue. If you think about it right now, there are really very few restaurants that you can go into town that you can sit down, have a waitress or waiter wait on you and serve you that are smoke-free. I can think of Pizza Hut and a new Mediterranean restaurant, the only thing that I can think of that you can actually sit down and be waited on by somebody, and they're smoke-free. That's really important for Starkville, because there are 12 states that all restaurants and the bar areas in these restaurants are smoke-free. In fact, Washington State will become the 13th on the temporary. On top of that, we've got 250 communities that have similar ordinances. And those include four southeastern conference towns. You've got Fayetteville, Arkansas, Lexington, Kentucky, Gainesville, Florida, and Athens, Georgia. I would like to see, and we would like to see Starkville become the fifth SEC town to do this. I think it's really important. It would make us more attractive to tourists, to convents. I think it would help us recruit students. It would help us recruit job candidates. It's... We're talking about the United States right now, where you're about. A third of the people who live in the U.S. live in a community where restaurants and the bars within a restaurant are smoke-free. So anybody that we're trying to attract to this town, there's a really good chance they live in a place where they've gotten used to the restaurants being smoke-free. This is a trend that's going across the United States and more recently in the last five years, across the southeast. Our neighbors in Alabama, Kentucky, Arkansas, Georgia, and Florida have been very active on this issue. Many communities have gone smoke-free. And Florida's a state that's smoked-free the last few years. I would like Starkville to become the first major town in the state to be passing ordinance that are passing all over the southeast. Finally, I'd like to say just a few words about the ordinance that we drafted. We drafted this as a very strong ordinance, meaning that there are no exemptions for certain kinds of restaurants or certain kinds of night. The logic is all the public health benefits to the people who work there, to the students who go there, and whatnot, go away if you allow smoking at certain times or in certain places. And also, it would create an unlevel playing field. I think that the experiences of Fayetteville, Arkansas, of Gainesville, Florida, when you create a level playing field, the restaurants are not negatively impacted. As a whole, the aggregate sales stay the same or equal. And that's all I have to say. Ben Needham, come up next.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kemp, and the members of the board. On behalf of the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, I want to thank you for considering this issue. It's a very important issue, and as we can talk about public health. We are thankful for your leadership and actually having an open mind to have this discussion today. My name is Ben Needham, and I'm manager for Local Issues for the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. We're based out of Washington, D.C. Our mission is to reduce tobacco toll on our country's health by preventing kids from starting to smoke, helping adult smokers quit, and preventing everyone from smoking secondhand smoke. I was also resident of Starkville for four years while I was attending college here. I actually spent four of the best years of my life partying, making Starkville a dog place. And I continue to come back year after year and love the progress that was made here. And I think this is a great move for the city of Starkville. Robert covered the public health aspect of it. I think that we don't... I think that the public health community in that debate, all the scientists there, this is a public health issue. The minute you implement smoke-free workplace laws, that immediately improves the health of every single worker, every single customer in that restaurant, bar, in that workplace. But I want to talk a little bit about the economic aspects. And I think that's more a lot of discussion is gonna go. If you... I have a notebook that I will submit to the record as well that has a summary of every economic study that has been done on this issue, good and bad. It breaks down how the researchers looked at the data and how they came up with their conclusions. It also breaks down the funding of these studies, which is very important. Yes, the public health community have paid for some of these studies. Yes, the tobacco industry has paid for some of these studies. And yes, there are some peer groups out there that have done these studies on their own. And the majority of the studies support smoke-free workplace laws. The studies that do not support smoke-free workplace laws and say that they have a negative impact on businesses are all studies that have been paid for by the tobacco industries or organizations that receive funding from the tobacco industry. With that said, I would like to point you to a recently published peer-reviewed article titled "Review Quality of Studies On Economic Effects Of Smoked-Free Workplace Policies On Hospitality Industries." Examined all of the studies conducted on the impact of smoke-free workplace laws and reached the following conclusion. "All of the best-designed studies report no impact or a positive impact of smoke-free workplace or smoke-free restaurant and bar laws with sales or employment. Policymakers can act to protect workers and patrons from the top sins of secondhand smoke, confident in rejecting industry claims that will be in adverse economic impact." This conclusion sums up the experience that we've seen in Lexington, Kentucky, Athens, Georgia, Fayetteville, Arkansas, and many, many other locations that have passed smoke-free workplace laws. Despite the cries and complaints that you will hear from restaurant owners and the restaurant association, there is no credible study out there that will show a negative impact on businesses. What we find out is that once these laws are passed, people want to buy more. The smoking population, if you break down the country, which serves very well with the rest of communities, there's only about 20 to 25 percent smokers in the population. So you're looking at 75 percent of people that have money, that spend money, that are non-smokers, non-smokers that want to go into the non-smoking background. I'm not gonna repeat some of this stuff here. However, the real impact is on the smoke-free workplace laws is on the workers and the patrons of these establishments. Like I said, it will occur immediately. In conclusion, comprehensive workplace laws that are the cheapest, fairest, and most effective way to protect the public health. That's why these laws are sweeping the country from coast to coast and from small cities to large. Cities like Metcalf, Mississippi, which is already in the Delta, has passed one of the strongest laws in the country. Places like Athens, Georgia, and Lexington, Kentucky, which is especially recognized as well, have said no negative impact. The time is now for Starkville to act to protect its citizens. And let's be progressive and move our city forward. I hope I can still say this, because I do spend a lot of time here and do football season and other sporting events. But the time is now. Thank you again for considering this issue. I gladly take any questions that you might have. I do have cards that I'll share with everyone after the meeting. So if you have questions after the meeting that you want to ask me, I gladly answer them. Come back, sit down with you one-on-one, discuss any of the concerns that you have with moving Starkville to a smoke-free.
Our next speaker will be Joe Koch, and then Dr. Collins.
Can I leave the floor?
I like it dressed in red. How you doing? How you doing?
Pretty well. My name's Joe Koch. I own City Bagel Cafe. We've been a smoke-free restaurant for nine years now. Thank you, Starkville. It, to me, nobody should have to breathe cigarette smoke if they don't choose to. So I'd like to see it pass ordinance for the kids' sake. I smoked for 12 years, 13 years. The only reason anybody ever starts smoking is because they think it's cool. And if we, maybe if it's not in your face in every restaurant or bar in a college town, maybe some college kids might have to start.
Dr. Collins will speak next.
How you doing?
Good. I'm Bob Collins. I'm a physician. I've been practicing in Starkville University for 28 years. Like Joe, I'm a former smoker. Not many folks here probably know that because I quit right after I arrived at Starkville. Tobacco is the gateway drug to all drug use in the country. Everybody in this room has ever smoked. Everybody has ever drank before they did anything else. They snuck out behind the barn and smoked a cigarette. The pattern I see, time and time and time again, is always the same. A freshman comes to campus, has not been smoking, has a, comes from a restricted background. You ask him, "Do you smoke?" "No." 10 months later, "Do you smoke?" "Yes." "How much do you smoke?" "Oh, I only smoked two or three cigarettes when I was a kid." "I was a gang." "What are you doing?" "Drunk and smoked." A year later, "How much do you smoke?" "Two or three cigarettes a day." A year later, "How much do you smoke?" "Half a pack a day," and doc, and need to quit. "What did I do to quit?" If this pattern has been repeated to me, once it's been repeated to me, the day I can count about five times, I went through this exact same process. If we care for our young people, if we care for the future of this community, there's only one thing we can do. And that is make this community friendly to everybody in the community, not to the 25 percent who smoke. Personal experience, a week ago, my wife and I went out to... We don't go out to periodically. We go to City Bagel on Friday night. That's about it. And we went to another restaurant. First thing that hit us as we walked in the door was the cigarette smell. It absolutely knocked us both out. My wife has asthma. We laughed fairly soon thereafter because the environment was not conducive. There is no way you can take and make a smoking, non-smoking zone in a restaurant. The restaurant is either smoking or non-smoking. The air moves from the smokers to the non-smokers. And it is dangerous. It is injurious. It's more injurious than it is to those. I see this... For those of you who know me, I'm not very politically active. This is the first time I've been to an alternate meeting in 28 years, which tells you how important I feel this issue is. For my predecessor here, John Longus, he would not be sitting down. He'd be standing up, banging a shoe on the table, telling me to bring this thing about.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your consideration.
Do we have a show of hands of all the people who are here tonight who have shown support here for Mr. McMillan? Can we see a show of hands of you? Looks like the whole audience is here.
There's ones in the hall too, Dan.
There's some in the hall. We appreciate your support in coming tonight. We're now open for citizens' comments. And we would like for those of you who have shown support for the smoke ban on smoking, if you would hold your comments. We feel like that this is such an important issue with the community that it will stimulate public debate. This would be a good thing to have in a town meeting forum for those opposed to it and those who are for it. At this particular point on our agenda, we do now have the floor open for citizens' comments. And you're allowed three minutes of any comment that you would like to say. Yes, sir. Good evening, Robin.
Thank you very much. And I'll make it real brief. Since I was one of the ones singled out in the paper for being the smoking guy, I did want to let you know that... I guess I have to be a citizen and not representing the Restaurant Association tonight. But I am Robin Fann. I'm a non-smoker. I run a non-smoking restaurant. And never had... I don't take my fa... I choose not to take my family to smoking restaurants. But that's my choice. The government doesn't tell me where to and where not to go. You know, I agree with the public health issue on the smoking issue. Let's attack it from the sale of tobacco. Let's not regulate what you can and can't do in different places. Just get tobacco out of here. Reg... Get it, don't have it in Starkville. Period. Takes care of that. You know, I'd say, my mother died of cancer. She smoked cigarettes all her life. She died of the cigarette in her mouth with oxygen in her nose. And I didn't want to stay around. I thought it might get blown up. But that's what killed her. And so I come from a non-sm... I mean, to me, it's a bad thing, and I agree 100 percent. But there are people out there who have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in this community with smoking as part of their business plan. I didn't invest my money that way in my restaurant because I knew I was gonna be a non-smoking facility. But they invested theirs, and they employed people, and they invest in our community. And to me, it's just not our place to put them under or ruin their investment possibilities. Last thing, we did a poll of all the restaurants in town, and I'll get you all copies of all this. That's why I say all the restaurants. There were a few that we did not, we couldn't get ahold of, or we missed by phone two or three different times. We polled 45 different restaurants, and I will say this includes the university cafeteria and the union area, whatever you call that. 56 percent of those were non-smoking, totally non-smoking. 33 percent had designated... Thirty-three percent had designated smoking areas versus non-smoking areas and eleven percent allowed smoking everywhere.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. And I'll give you a copy of this and...
Give it to the lady in red and she'll make copies and carry these things around. I'm very good at delegating. Do we have any other citizens that would like to have a concern and speak at this time? Yes. And you know, those who are in favor of the ban, we just gave them an appropriate time. We know what everybody's going to say in regard to, in favor of putting a ban on smoking and we're trying to hold our time limits to where we would eventually get into a public debate and we would like not to get into public debate this evening.
First of all, I would just like to address your comment about the word ban. We don't like the word ban. We're, this is about a public health issue and about clean air. We don't want to ban anyone's right to do anything except to promote clean air. But what I wanted to say in, in the request for Mr. McMillan for your consideration of this ordinance is that I conduct smoke cessation classes and at the hospital, local hospital here, the Wellands Connections. And so not only am I here to ask you to consider on behalf of the non-smokers, but those smokers that are out there that are trying to quit, this would be a tremendous help to them because in our classes that we have and we've had, we've only been doing this for about a year, we've had nearly two hundred residents go through this smoke cessation program. And this is one of the biggest challenges that they face. Majority of them, it's the hardest thing because they still want to go out with their friends, they still want to socialize, they still want to go out to the restaurants. And it's, it's hard for them. So this would make those smokers out there trying to quit much easier. So I just would like to, you know, bring that to your attention as well, not only for the non-smokers out there, but for the smokers who are trying to quit. And just to reiterate, you know, your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, do you have something to say this evening? For those of you that don't normally come to our meeting, Mr. Turner has something to say at every meeting.
What do you think?
How are you?
Concerning, for smoking is concerned, I, I have a temper and sometimes I have to smoke, cool the temper, stay out of trouble, but that, that's, that is my choice. We have a lot of people that smoke for different reasons. Some smoke to calm down if they get in a stressful situation, but we have to deal, you know, with that in time. We have people that, when they pay money for meals or whatever, if you are, hold them to a certain situation, they will leave and that will hurt the revenue. Then we definitely don't need our revenue hurt. Been a lot of fighting at, at Starckel High School and a lot of people wondering what it's causing these fights. They getting kind of nervous and that's the concern.
Mr. Turner, do we have any other citizens that would like to speak not in favor of the ban or against, that we would like to kind of bring this to a conclusion and take that to another debate later? Yes, sir?
Hey, guys. My name is Jeff Johns. I live at two fifteen Woodlawn in Starckel. If we're going to ban something, let's ban all the selling of Ole Miss gear in Starckel. That offends me, to me and it's... Now, I know there's a lot of health issues around smoking. Like Mr. Fann, my father died of smoking cancer. However, however, the point is, almost to a man, you guys ran this term, almost to a man, on development and positive businesses in Starckel. What message could this possibly send to industries, restaurants that are looking at the Starckel community that you guys are going to mandate them how they run their business? Did we ask, Mr. Fann's probably got another number to tell you, how many of the owners of restaurants in Starckels were for this ban? I think it was one. I don't know most of your backgrounds very well, but I don't see any restaurant owners on board. And so I'm real interested to know how you guys can know how to run a restaurant. These guys do and they're against this ban. This is a very industry-specific bill, very industry-specific, and I don't understand how you can tell them how to run their businesses. Furthermore, I'd love to know, have we contacted Chili's? What do they think of it? What does Red Lobster, Olive Garden, Buffalo Wild Wings, other industries that are looking at the Starckel community, what's their position on you telling them what they can and cannot do with their dollars in the Starckel community? The smoke-free ban, I think, hits up to every individual. Their dollars can be spent all day long down in the Cotton District in a no-smoking restaurant. That's up to them. If they don't like the smoke, don't go to restaurants that do smoke. You know, that's, that's completely up to them. Let the marketplace determine how this is, how this is handled, not by legislative action. I mean, you're, you're voting to take away one of my rights as an American, I mean, quite honestly. And, you know, that's, to me, is a problem. That's all I've got on that.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a totally different issue.
Excellent. Come up here. We'll give you five minutes.
Mine, though, is, is not so altruistic. My name is Carol German. I live at fifteen oh six South Montgomery Street and I'm here tonight to ask you for your approval for us to install a temporary retaining wall between the drainage ditch and the trees slightly onto the thirty-foot, you know, kind, I brought some pictures so you can see what it looks like. Because we're putting in a ten-foot wide plant bed in our front yard, which we've been told by the landscapers, if we don't have pile of something there temporarily until the bed takes hold, it will wash down into the drainage ditch. And we, we're already having my landscapers clean out that drainage pipe every other week or so, just on things that run down in there anyway. So if we had a bed in there, it's going to run down. What we're proposing is a temporary retainer that is made of blocks that are, which we already have, which fit together something like Legos. And like Legos, they can be taken down and moved if for any reason, you know, the road is widened or some reason, they have to go in there. We're willing to sign something to that effect, that they would be taken down because the need for it, if the bed is raised in order to widen the road, the need for it goes away anyhow. So we wouldn't even need the wall there. We just need it there now because the picture that I brought shows that there's a steep slope. Mr. Webson out to see it and agrees that we are not in any way blocking the drainage ditch. In fact, we would be helping the drainage if we put it there and it can be taken down, my landscaper says, in less than a day and moved somewhere else if we need to.
And what did Mr. Webb say?
Mr. Webb said that as far as he was concerned, he did not see it would be a problem, except that I needed your approval because of where it is.
It's going to be a removal type thing and if we ever have to widen the road, you just have to understand that that would have to go.
Well, as you said, because if we do widen the road and that ditch goes away, then the need for the wall goes away as well, you know, because it's suddenly flattened there. So what we are proposing, because of the house being a fairly nice home, we're proposing something that will look good, so it will actually look good in front of the property as well. But it is, we, we've used them in other homes in other areas and when the need for it goes away or when we change our mind about needing it there, we just let them off and put them someplace else in the yard so that they're not, it's no way a permanent structure.
The problem with the court being that is five, five or six feet on the city property.
All she's trying to do is make the city property look better, isn't she?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I think the safest and most prudent thing would be for the staff just to consider and evaluate this matter as opposed to us making a comment.
And bringing us a recommendation.
The problem, the problem that we have is, we didn't know because if you, one of the pictures there is of mailboxes, all is of a mailbox. The mailboxes all up and down the street are up against, you know, up against the property lines or not property lines, up against the street line. So that people have cemented those in and some of them even built little retainers around them and put plants in them. We didn't know and the plants have already been ordered and all of the materials have been ordered and are currently at our property. We've been told by the landscaper, if we don't get those plants in the ground this week, they're going to freeze. And we, we're in danger of them freezing or dying because we're, you know...
Bill, did you have a comment?
I, I would recommend that it be allowed as part of landscaping because we do not, we kind of encourage the landscape to widen the way we were not used to, subject to the landscape ordinance, that is, meaning we need to occupy that piece of property that that landscape would have to be removed or extenuated.
Mr. Mayor, I know that this matter be taken under advisement and be by the appropriate staff with this matter being considered again by this mayor and board at his first meeting in December of two thousand and five.
I'm going to lose my plants. I'm going to lose...
Roy, the only problem, and of course, this is an award which I am privileged to represent, and it's the first I have heard of this particular thing. Of course, as I'd go up and down South Montgomery, I was wondering what were those stacks of things?
Yes, they are.
In, in the yard.
The painting wall blocks.
Well, it's hard to tell from the plastic graphic.
They can actually be moved at any time and we are willing, my husband and I are willing to sign a letter to that intent if, if that's necessary in order to move this forward and get, you know, so that we can not lose all the plants that have already been ordered and are sitting ready to go into the yard. We've already lost a week because they were supposed to go into the, into the ground last week, last Wednesday or Thursday.
And of course, we understand that and we understand that the hard freeze will be, I think, tomorrow night and so forth, down into the twenties. Of course, this is a perfect example. I would encourage all citizens to just not make assumptions on things you plan to do without double-checking with the city, particularly when you're talking about road right-of-way.
We didn't know it.
I, I understand that.
And we hired a professional landscaper who apparently didn't know it either. Once we discovered it, we halted the work and came here tonight. You know, but we are saying that if we, if we are allowed to go ahead and put it in there, we can move it if it becomes an issue at any time, unlike some of those other permanent structures that are cemented into the ground.
Right, of course, if they had to be removed, they would have to be removed also if the city widened the road or some such thing. Given the situation, given the, I'm sorry, Ms. Vice Mayor, did your motion have a second or did it not?
It's not yet. Mr. Mayor, my motion was, we'll see whether it gets a second. And I'm, recently, this is very brief, recently I've been in this motion. I'm not just necessarily against this project, but I think the best prudent and conservative way to do business is ensure that this kind gets proper consideration by the appropriate staff so ample consideration and deliberations can go into a decision that involves taxpayers' expenses in dollars.
It doesn't involve taxpayers' expenses in dollars at all because we're putting, it's, it's all money that we've spent and if we have to move it, we'll move it.
Mr. Mayor, my motion is that we take this matter under advisement and it is to be considered and evaluated by the appropriate staff with the report being brought back to this board at its first meeting in December of two thousand and five.
All have heard the motion. Do we have a second to that motion? Motion dies from a lack of second.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I would offer a motion that the city allow the property owner at, what is the address?
Fifteen oh six.
Fifteen oh six South Montgomery Street to install the landscaping project that is proposed, subject to the condition that the city may require that it be removed for whatever reason, at whatever time. And I would offer that motion.
We, we have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please show your hand by raising it. All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I won't even sit down. I'll be so quick. My name's David Witt and I live at one oh four Bellwood Drive and Timber Co. I just wanted to make the board aware that there, there is a group of restaurant owners and managers that would like to make a presentation to the board to share our side of this debate. However, we would like to see the draft that we have not seen. We would like to address any enforcement penalty issues that are there.
No problem. See the lady in red down there and she can provide you with copies. That is only fair that the other side give, have their opportunity to give their presentation. Any other citizen comments? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Mary Hogan. I'm the resident of Starckel, Ward Seven, it's not seven, it's my husband. I'm smoke-free. That's why I'm here. I want to, want you all to go into a personal thing. I know they, they brought statistics and everything, but I want you to think on a personal note. If it's your child, your niece, nephew, grandchild, whatever, working in a restaurant and that's the only job that they can get and they have to be faced with waiting on a person that's smoking, they have no choice because they need this job. They go in, they breathe in the smoke, they leave. Few years later, they develop lung asthma, respiratory problems. And it's something that you could have did. City of Starckel, the restaurant could have did, not just one, but twenty, thirty children or more, that could have did to save these childrens and we did not. We're here tonight, doing our part, speaking up, asking you all to consider it seriously. And we're asking you all to do your part and save a child's life, even a grandchild that you all do not even have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We've had ample opportunity for those to speak in favor and those to speak. Any other citizen comments not made pertaining to the smoking issue? Would like to speak pertaining to the smoking issue? Good. Come up and have, and have a seat. I'm going to throw this at you if it is, though.
I, I am hearing a stick about a quantity of staff. My name is Lyle Wirt. I'm the president of Starckel High School Young Democrats and I'm also working to try and get a Starckel Youth Commission created. As you're well aware, I have sent emails to pretty much all of you and I'm just sitting here tonight asking that you reply. I'd like to, so, I just, I'd, I'd like to get appointments with all of you so that I can sit down and discuss with each and every one of you, your different points and opinions. I know I've heard from Alderman Corey and Alderman Rose and I have got your email and will get to you shortly. I'd also like to speak with other people for you, if that's all right. But it is a, it's a very new issue for Starckel and I hope that you consider it and that we make Starckel more progressive for its youth and citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens that would like to speak on any issues other than smoking?
Mr. Mayor, if no one else is going to speak, I think we should have a, a brief recess, allow those to leave who may desire to leave if most of the attendees don't leave after this.
Even before that, I'd like to make just a comment and then specifically address this by a free presentation. Well, obviously, this is an important issue for, for all of us and it's an issue that needs to be decided by the people here in Starckel. In my opinion, it's something, it's a reflection of the type of community that we want. And it seems to me that all of you have come here tonight on both sides of the issue and you need to know what we're going to do as a board. And the mayor alluded to, to some ideas, but I wanted to be even more formal in the form of a motion that we take this proposed ordinance under advisement, which means that we'll consider it and that would allow for continued public discussion. It would allow for us to consider this issue at our next meeting, which will be December the sixth, and we will be keeping you fully informed of where we are in the process. This is something where your voices will be heard and we'll have something that's right for Starckel, whatever the outcome.
Second. We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion on this issue?
I just would like to mention, would it be the board's pleasure to possibly set up in the meantime a town hall meeting so that we can allow citizens to discuss and air out these issues and sort of iron out what it is we do and don't want?
Are you adding that to his motion or are you just making a statement?
I'd like to amend that we include a town hall meeting in that motion.
You would? Are you willing to have that added to your motion?
I am indeed.
All right, uh, since that's a part of it. All those in favor of the motion of Mr. Cox, please raise your hand. Oh, you did say, but I'm in a hurry. Wait on this, that was right. Thank you all for coming tonight. If you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, it will be very entertaining.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octobah County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Mayor's business.
Resolutions.
And I'm asking, uh, for authorization for another seven days of extension. I think our last people should be coming back, Ms. Brohl, from the Gulf Coast, is that right?
Yes, the chief's, uh, has some folks down there that should be back on the eighteenth. So this should cover, this should be our last seven-day extension, absent something else.
All right, and we need a motion and a passage to authorize, authorize an additional seven days extension of emergency status for the city of Starville.
I move the emergency status declaration of the city of Starville being extended an additional seven days.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Is there any further discussion? I think all of you are well aware of what we're doing here. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. Uh, we have gotten on here a consideration and approval of, uh, board policy for authorization for our sanitary department to clean up the city after special events like MSU ball games, uh, Christmas parades, uh, the next day in order to get the city looking, uh, sparkly as best as possible, and I believe that you will find some.
Mr. Mayor, then I'll be the sanitation department district department for the street sweeper if we need it.
Which, uh, probably have to operate would be a good idea, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir.
And do we have anyone that would entertain a motion that we, uh, consider a board policy for that?
Mr. Mayor, I, I have carefully reviewed the, uh, the information out packet that was submitted to by our, uh, chief administrative officer. I think that, uh, it serves the purpose that it needs to serve, so I will approve of that policy statement.
Just make specifically prohibits private, I mean.
Well, I agree with that to be included.
Unless it is specifically approved by the board.
Well, even if it's approved.
Well, we can include that, that's part of the motion, prohibit, uh, private events.
We just.
Instead of just saying special events.
Uh, what are we talking about, private events?
Any type of private event, it's not a public event, it's football game, parade.
What about Bulldog Bash, and, uh, that's a private event by the students, and we've talked about the, the Kitten District Arts Festival, which is a big deal. That's basically a private event by the, the Arts Council.
Christmas open house.
Private stands and by private stores.
If the board makes, if it's approved by the board and the board finds that it's in the best interest of the public to provide these services, then you can do it. But you're asking, you're making a general policy statement.
Okay, the policy statement, council, is to, uh, provide, uh, and have the available appropriate city staff to clean up the city after mainly, uh, MSU football games and any other, uh, public events that's held here in the city. Is there any legal problem with that?
Public event, no, but it says special events, council.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I don't think our intention is to do any, any, um, private events, so we can exclude private events, there's no problem with that. I think that, that the overall purpose of this is just keep the city clean, so we can, and that, that's, that's part of the motion, yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, it's part of the motion.
And of course, we're talking about the public streets and byways and sidewalks. We don't talk about private property, uh, city-owned parking lots and things like that. We're talking about sweeping, cleaning up trash, so forth.
Yes, sir, but it says impacted areas. It's not specifically limited to those things. So I, I agree with what the intent is, I'm, and we're all, we're not disagreeing, I'm just trying to make sure it's, 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 on its face, it's fine, except I just wanna make sure we talk about these.
What's that clarification, council, are you, are you final with that?
Yes.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor, is it in proper legal form?
Okay, we have a motion in proper legal form. Do we have a second?
Uh, ju- just, just, we'll go ahead and second.
I, I'm not entirely, maybe we could restate the motion, 'cause I'm not entirely certain what the, the new verbiage is on the policy.
Uh, let's see if we can rephrase the, the situation. Uh, since we did not have a second, Mr. Mayor, I would move that the, uh, board authorize the mayor, chief administrative officer, and appropriate departmental heads staff to, at the discretion of the mayor and chief administrative officer, make arrangements for cleanup of city streets, thoroughbays, sidewalks, and so forth, uh, when deemed necessary, taking into account, uh, city events or events occurring in the city.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, I have no, a problem with that, and I think it's just a different way of restating it, council, I guess it's a matter of, of, of language, but, but that, 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 that serves the intent, you know? The overall thing is, we want the city clean, so.
That's right.
So, so let's support this unanimous label on.
Are you gonna second?
I second, I second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second, and if, are the, are the board members satisfied with what they heard? If you're satisfied with what you heard, we have a motion with a second. Would you please show by raising your hand for approval of this motion, please? Excellent, thank you. Uh, next on the list is a consideration for approval of the MSU shuttle project, and we have a letter agreement in which we would be committing, uh, uh, from the previous administration, two hundred and five thousand dollars towards the, uh, shuttle, uh, purpose. Uh, one of the things that I, you know, this thing is based on a year-to-year basis, and I did ask that, uh, if this thing went to flunk, that we would get, uh, something for our two hundred thousand, that would be two buses. That would be a side letter in the agreement.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I would move that we, you know, take this matter under advisement to have some additional discussion with the university over, uh, certain issues that might be related to the operation of the, uh, shuttle system, uh, determination of, of routes, uh, times, uh, all this type of thing. And unless I'm mistaken, and I, I will have to go back and check a, a file on this, the request is for the complete amount that the city, uh, authorized in the last term to be committed to the project, but the project itself is reduced in scope and cost, uh, namely the terminal, uh, facility, but the request for the city match is the same as if it were the same, uh, uh, full project. I'd like to have some additional time to check this, I'm just, uh, cold on this.
Basically, the match we would be getting would be buying, uh, two buses, and that's about what the cost. And, uh, since, uh, if they had gone to flunk, uh, and we had bought into the terminal, we would own a percentage of the terminal, uh, terminal you would assume. And it's been assured that, uh, our collateral would be two of the buses if, uh, the same, does not get funded, uh, on a yearly basis. Uh, you do know, you do realize that the funding is on a yearly basis and not, uh, five, ten, or fifteen-year base.
Uh, I understand that, uh, of course, I'm not so sure why the city would want two buses, uh, but.
But you can always sell them, please.
I guess so. Uh, but in any case, I, I think we ought to explore a little bit all the, uh, policy decisions surrounding this particular project. Who's determining the routes, when are they gonna be determined, that we have.
Well, those are good questions.
Suggestions in this, all this type of thing.
Oh, we're gonna have you to say so, basically.
Um, that's what you want to say.
And is this a form of a motion?
Uh, it is a motion to take it under advisement for a little additional study, and this should be resolved by the next meeting.
I would, uh, I would just like to state that I'm excited over the prospect of a public transit system for the city. I think it's something we need, but I feel like it's something we need to do right, so I want to second Mr. McGlore's motion to take the issue under advisement.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Do we have any further discussion, or to take this under advisement?
I would just certainly agree with, with, uh, my colleague Alderman Corey. We are all excited about this, and thus the commitment of the city to make this consideration, but we have few details we need to talk about.
All of you have heard the motion? We have a second. All those in favor of the motion that we, uh, that you just heard, raise your hand, please. We can't get it on camera, and we purposely raised our hands in order to get it on camera.
Got my phone.
Oh, of a sort. All those opposed? Thank you. Uh, the next item we have is that we, the Oversight Committee asks if we would look at the research park to see what it would cost to bring it up to a standard in which the city would accept it, to maintain it. And I was, uh, informed by Mr. Webb that this is something that had occurred several years ago, you probably even hear the sound, that the city would take it over at, uh, some particular time, uh, to no cost to us at this particular point. He went out and, uh, he looked at, to see what it would take to get it into top shape, and it was approximately a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. And the Oversight Committee wondered if we would, uh, have Mr. Webb to supervise this and if the city would accept it for upkeep, uh, after it was brought up to proper standards. And I have before you a, uh, a cost estimate on what it would cost. Bill indicated at the time that not all the roads, uh, needed, uh, surfacing, but it told us would be a good opportunity to go ahead and surface all of them in order for it to aesthetically look nice with it all being firmly, uh, repaid. So we have this tonight here before you for your discussion.
The request is simply to, uh, agree that Mr. Webb will, will provide some engineered services to the Oversight Committee. It's not an agreement to accept perpetual care and maintenance of the streets and the research park.
Uh, no, they wanted to know what it would, uh, take for us to, uh, that was, they wanted to know what it was gonna cost, then they wanted to know if he would say supervise this. And they would like for us to consider, uh, uh, taking it in as far as our perpetual maintenance of the city, after they have spent the money to bring it up to standards.
Again, of course, without any detail, at least, uh, if it accepted perpetual care and maintenance, a significant budget item that would be, uh, reoccurring.
May I remind you that we do provide the water, the sewage, and the electrical, uh, utilities out there. We do take care of those particular issues, have taken care of those issues out there for a number of years, is that not right, Ed?
Yes.
That, uh, and I was, uh, reminded, Bill reminded me that at one time in previous boards, uh, they had agreed to take over the research park, uh, roads, is that not right, Bill, in upkeep?
Not that road specifically, but we have, we've been passed, taken over roads that have been brought up since classification, that weren't originally dedicated to the city.
Then I misunderstood you.
And so thus, there was no agreement to take research park roads at all, that I can recall.
No. They never, have never offered them to us to take over. Normally, when we do a subdivision or approve a subdivision, they automatically dedicate the road to classification.
Provided it meets all the standards and qualifications that the city requires.
It did at the time, but.
Uh, and of course, on this Oversight Committee, are we talking the new proposed Oversight Committee of Research Park one and two? Are we talking Research Park one? What are we talking about?
Talking about the original Oversight, uh, one.
The CETA?
And I know there's been a lot of discussions that because so many people use the research park for recreational activities and the, the traffic doesn't appear to justify the two lanes, that we could potentially turn that boulevard, um, into a, a bike and walking path. So I'd want us to carefully consider that before we, one, before we take over the road and could have a golden opportunity if we're gonna do that overlay, to at least consider. And I've heard some proposals talked, uh, in various places, that might be a good idea.
I think bike lane is proposed out there, but not necessarily in road area. Do you then have a motion to give us additional time to take a look at?
I would indeed like to make a motion that we take this issue under advisement, um, so that we can consider the further impact of the budget areas and otherwise.
Second.
We have a motion to take this particular item of the Oversight, uh, Research Park, uh, street overlay and improvements, uh, under advisement. Do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, they sent a request, starting with.
Uh, we, we, uh, they asked if we would, uh, if the request was asked, how much would it cost to say get the roads fixed so that we would be willing to say perhaps take them over, okay? His first request was only, what, ninety thousand?
Yes.
And I said, Bill, that's not gonna work. If we take anything over with, it needs to be, uh, something that we can live here with many years after, or fixed up in a first-class manner, and because it's in pretty bad shape out there. You get into some of the drainage and the other issues and such like that. Bill comes back and says that the, uh, roads don't all need to be overlaid, and I think I asked him to go back and consider overlaying all the roads plus all the repairs, so that we're not into this issue of, of redoing ten years down the road or fifteen years down the road, but it would be substantial to get five years down the road. Uh, and the university is trying to get into a situation where they can get out of the upkeep as such like that, of having roads dedicated to us.
Uh, you know, wait a minute, in one breath, we're saying university, the next breath, we're saying, oh, CETA, uh, we, we really need a formal.
That's a little conflict, that's right, it is.
We really need a formal request from somebody as to exactly what it is they propose.
The Oversight Board is the one that the question is, this is not a no CETA request.
Isn't there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion on the floor that just be taken under advisement, yes.
Called a question on the previous motion.
All right, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please raise your hands. Uh, yes, that is a little conflict, and, oh, CETA.
It's like conflict, the interesting.
Well, it now is confusing and conflicting as well, though, oh, CETA doesn't know what the Oversight is doing twice as well. Uh, this brings us down for consideration authorization for improvements to the City Hall, for the administrative offices, reception area of the City Hall, and the hallway, and improvements to aesthetically improve the, the surroundings of our current City Hall. Uh, I have proposed, uh, that we use the travel budget at the mayor's office to say fund the majority of this.
Hopefully, our chairman of organization of operations has a motion to support to, uh, to approve this.
He might want to put that on advisement, too.
No, we don't need that on advisement, we approve it. You just take the, uh, yeah, right.
You're mumbling on that end of the table to your, to the group down there. We can't hear down here what y'all saying.
Oh.
I can't hear. Can you hear?
It's mumbling.
It's mumbling. It's mumbling. It's mumbling. It's mumbling.
To, to my colleague from Ward Seven, what I just said is that we, uh, we, I'm trusting that we'll get a motion from the Chairperson of the Organization Operations Committee that'll be in favor of this needed improvement to the mayor's area of City Hall and to the, to the reception area. So I'm hoping that my colleague from Ward Seven's chairperson will defer to him for a motion that I can second. Mr. Mayor, Lord, I would move that the city authorize a expenditure up to the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars to do some renovation and refurbishing to selected portions of the City Hall, a much-needed project, and that, uh, that the city be the contractor for this, acquiring the necessary skills and tradesmen as needed, and of course, that all applicable provisions of the state purchasing law be applied very carefully to the expenditure funds for the various items.
Second. We have a motion and second. Do we have any further discussion?
Just a point of clarification.
Yes.
I think the motion was suggesting that, or perhaps early discussion, that we'd be pulling from the travel budget in the Mayor's Office, and in your motion, you used a figure of twenty-one thousand. My recollection is that the travel was only fifteen thousand, and I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that, and perhaps had additional thoughts on where the additional six thousand dollars makes on.
Um, certainly, I am aware of that. Of course, we promptly could find this from additional items in the mayor's budget.
Or the year in balance?
Or the year in balance.
Fair enough.
Any further, yes, ma'am?
I have a question.
Yes.
To, uh, Mr. McGlore.
Ma'am.
In your, in your motion of the twenty-one thousand dollars, is this indeed part of the travel, the money that's in the line item for the mayor's travel?
Yes, that is, is the case, and in fact, Mr. Mayor Pro Tempore, I would add to my motion, if you will agree with the second, that the line item reserved for mayor's travel be used to provide the bulk of the funds for this renovation.
Okay, because it was not clear here.
Thank you.
Thank you, because it wasn't clear.
Okay, we've all heard the motion. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. Uh, this brings us down to the dormant bank account. And I believe, Ms. Brule, I'll let you address those if it's something the mayor's business.
I'll be happy to. Where she was. I'll let his outlaw address that, Ms. Brule.
The dormant bank account, uh, we have two at NBC with Katie's Bank, and two at AMSA. And the amount was, was, was really broke to the board because they haven't been used for anything for the last ten years. And the only, only activity there is going to be the interest being applied to the accounts. They were the nineteen eighty-two water sewer bond when we had the, the sewer, water sewer project going in the city. And all of those have been completed and, and closed down.
So all these, this series of bonds, this, this series issue has been paid off?
That's correct.
Uh, of course, with, with that information, it is appropriate that we transfer. There will need to be some specific verbiage which tracks the statute, and I have not, not checked it tonight, to provide for transfer of surplus bond and interest funds to the appropriate account, so there is some verbiage that needs to go in there. And so I would make the motion that funds be transferred, subject to our dressing up this motion with the proper version verbiage tracking the state law requirement of transfer of surplus bond proceeds. And of course, it appropriately has to go to the water sewer bond. And I would so move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion with a second. Any further discussion? If not, we will vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. The next is the sweep account.
Uh, Mr. Brule has the sweep account. We opened the proposal on Friday.
Best option, choosing variable versus a fixed.
And I, it appeared just on the surface that banks first had the, had the bank proposal for the city at a four-point-five percent interest rate.
That's a variable rate, is that right?
No.
It is a variable rate.
Yes, yes.
Are you recommending a, just transformation purpose? Are you recommending a variable rate versus a fix? I know that one of the banks had a fixed rate, like three-point-seven, three-point-seven. I think specifically referred to, to AMSA. The letter from Mr. Slaver.
No, I'm, okay.
There's a fixed rate in that letter. Oh, Ms. Brule. And that's my, and I got a question on the floor here.
Okay, but no, I think theirs is, it depends on, uh, theirs is variable, depending on the, I guess the bid from the town.
I'll direct you to a just minute. Go ahead on with the next question.
I didn't really, uh, Alvin Perkins have a question. To the best of my knowledge, and believe these were put into our boxes. I got mine Thursday night.
We just, they were open only eleven.
You got yours today. I did very early, very early this morning. I think we ought to take these under advisement so we can carefully study the terms of these, and we're talking fixed rates, variable rates, floating with prime, all this type of thing, and I would so move.
Do we have a second to the motion to take this under advisement?
Ms. Mayor, let me answer that question. I have no objection to it. I'll make sure I'm clear on that. I got it in my packet last night, but, Mr. Outlaw, do you have that letter before you from AMSA?
Yes, I do, yes.
And will you look on that letter if it's the same one that I had? Uh, public funds fixed interest check, the fixed rate is three-point-seven-five. Is that, is that in this letter?
Yes, it is, it's true.
Hey, that's what I prefer it to. So my question to you is then, are you recommending a, a variable rate? I know we're taking it advised, but I want to consider this before the next meeting. Are you recommending a fixed rate, or are you recommending a variable rate to us?
Well, the four-point-five, uh, the four-point-five and the variable rate on the four-point-five doesn't go below the three-point. So, uh, and that's why we're recommending that one, because it doesn't, it would fall below the three-point.
I thought I had read the letter correctly. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second on the motion? Take this under advisement.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to take this under advisement.
I think Alvin Cox had a question, ma'am, so.
Does this compare with the current sweep account interest rate that we have?
Well, what we currently have is variable.
And the percentage that we're currently getting from?
I think it was three-point-two-five, but it is variable, so I don't know what the last was.
It, it was, the last was roughly around three-point-five.
This bank first, sounds like a great comparison.
And my, my letter that I provided to you, I was, Ms. Outlaw and I had not spoken specifically about it. I told her that I was recommending to the board the variable rate because, uh, just based on some of the experience I have had, the variable rate looks as though the interest rates are going to be going up, um, before they'd be going down. And this had a floor of three percent, um, and that was the reason for my recommendation.
And then, and then in the proposals, are there time, what timeframe did we use? So how, in other words, if we went with a fixed rate, are we looking at a one-year fixed, or are we variable? What is the timeframe of the sweep account bid that we provided?
There, there was no...
There wasn't, and that's the reason I think that the variable rate is really good because we can still go back and yet again negotiate. There is nothing that says we can't talk to them yet again if things trend the other way.
And Ms. Brule, and of course, and I'm going to support your recommendation. There's a point from the information I was trying to get from the city clerk, just to get a, a comparison and understanding of why she was recommending that. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second to take this under advisement? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. All those opposed, raise your hands. Thank you. This brings us down to board business. Consideration to complete an ADA compliance survey on the city sidewalk, it's a public parking place, matter of interest.
It is, and I guess earlier we were talking about the type of community that we want to start a whole day in, or to become, and in a lot of ways, this is an issue that addresses the same type of, of forward-looking, as forward-looking thinking. It's all about accessibility, and, and so what I'd like to ask, and I'll do so in the form of a motion, is to have the city conduct a survey to determine compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act all over city sidewalks and, and public parking spaces. And then second to that, to have that survey, and I'll ask Ms. Brule if my date is, is still appropriate, but to present that to the board at the next meeting, which would be December the sixth. And then three, that also provide us with some recommendations on if we have issues, whether it be with sidewalks or public parking spaces, that don't meet the ADA requirements on recommendations that you have, or an action plan to ensure compliance.
Uh, Alvin, if you have, I believe in your packet, the police department has done an analysis of the public, or the parking areas. You should have that available. Mr. Young, apparently, a number of years ago, we, oh, there he is, I'm sorry. A number of years ago, did an analysis of city buildings, and since then, obviously, we've been, had to be in compliance with ADA. So what we are lacking in your request would be the public sidewalks. So the analysis, you know, based with other duties that Mr. Young would have, would probably take a couple of weeks to get that done. Then are you asking for a cost estimate, for example, what it would take to make, to bring those things, those various sidewalks into compliance, as well as a timeline?
Well, if we take public parking spaces, because, of course, the chief, he did an amazing job getting all that done as quickly as he did, just what it will take to get those spots in compliance, whether it be the, the spot we have out in front of City Hall, or if we're looking at, at other, at other places, and I'm not necessarily certain that's a cost, it's how do we ensure compliance?
Sidewalks will be a cost. I mean, sidewalk curb cuts will be a cost, and I'm trying to determine exactly how much information you want, what kind of analysis you want.
Paint would be a cost.
I'm sorry?
Paint would be a cost.
Paint is also, paint and sign is your both costs, so.
I'm not sure I've answered your question.
What level you want the two, you want us to take the time to analyze the sidewalks, to determine exactly what our status is?
Can't it be done in two weeks?
Well, that was our guess, among other things.
This way, it's going to have to get involved, cost estimates and so forth. Y'all, y'all help us here.
I think a survey could be done in two weeks. I'm not sure the cost.
And that's the reason I was asking, do you want a cost estimate as well? Do you want a timeline in, in making those things occur? If, you know, if cost is technical object, which was a silly thing to say, from my perspective.
If, if it sounds like we can complete the survey in, in two weeks, then have, present that, and then from that information, then perhaps we can take the next step on what type of timeline we might be looking at to, to bring public property up to compliance, and then what costs.
Okay, so at the next board meeting, we'll present you a survey reflecting the sidewalks, and what sidewalks need curb cuts, how many, et cetera, et cetera.
If that's your pleasure, the board.
If I get that direction.
Thank you.
So you have a motion for us to have a survey at the next board meeting?
Yes, sir.
For ADA requirements and other issues as such like that, or non-compliance or whatever.
Let's call it compliance.
Yeah, I understand that. Uh, do we have any further discussion on the survey?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, just for a point of information from the board, site plan review beginning Friday morning is meeting, uh, Mr. Elton. We discussed city compliance as far as building code, and so we have adopted the international building code, which is precious to the issue. We are also the in-house review for compliance.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. All those opposed? Six to one. The next item on board business is approval of a holiday schedule for the city for Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Year's.
Mr. Mayor, I think that we stay down. Hopefully, I get a second. Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we adopt the holiday schedule that's been tendered by Ms. Lance, Chief Administrator Officer, being the Thursday and Friday, uh, November of Thanksgiving and the Friday following being November twenty-fourth and Friday, November twenty-fifth. Christmas being on a Sunday this year, and we can offer that, Christmas is on a Sunday.
Christmas is, uh...
And we can offer that, uh, the Friday before, December twenty-third, and Monday, December twenty-sixth. New Year's of two thousand and six is on a Sunday. We can offer that Monday, uh, January second to the six. I move that we adopt that holiday schedule.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to second Honorable Mayor Pro Tempore's motion on the holiday schedule for the city of Starkville.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And it's cut out related by discussion.
Y'all, if you go ahead and make a recommendation for the holidays in two thousand and six?
I'll bring that to the board, uh, first meeting in, in January.
That would give us kind of a calendar to work from, and for everyone else to work from, too.
In city tradition, as well as that.
Uh, our next item is a request approval for a resolution except construction of a sewer intersection system. I think there's something with Mr. Webb.
Yes, this, um, this final document, we want to approve a couple of the consent and due conditions.
This, uh...
Resolution is required by N D Q to finalize our loan. Basically, is our certification that we have accepted it, there's some engineered, uh, field inspection and his, his certification that has been done with our contact office. Now, we're going to approve this at the end of the pack.
Do we have a motion?
I would move that the city approve the resolution of the mayor's board of all, uh, accepting work performed by Brunson Nichols Construction Company on the sanitary sewer system project, project number S R F C two eight oh eight seven five hyphen oh one hyphen zero.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. This brings us down to a closed session in order to discuss going into executive session. And I believe one of the items that was approved was the, uh, city clerks to be discussed in the closed session. And I believe one of the items that was approved was the, uh, city clerks to be discussed, uh, in closed session.